Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting for November 7th, 2023. We will be going into closed session. Can I have the clerk read out the two items for closed session, please?
Closed session agenda item number one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition versus Calaveras County Board of Supervisors at All, Calaveras County Court Case Number 19CB44471. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation.
Thank you. Is there any public comments in the room? Seeing no public comments, we will go into closed session. for Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. If you can, will you please rise for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, united.
We were in closed session from 8:00 to 9:00. And Ms. Clerk, can you please read out in closed session or county council?
Chair Topfennel, I think that since we're going to be going back into closed session, we'll just report out at our next meeting.
Okay. So we are going to be going back into closed session at 12:30. So we will have lunch at 12:30 to 1:30. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda. This is staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates to upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Do we have any staff announcements in the room? Seeing none? Do we have any online?
There are no online requests.
Oh. All right. Moving on to the next item. Item number three, this says proclamation for adult services, adopt a proclamation recognizing November 11th as Veterans Day. At this point, I will turn it over to Supervisor Garamendi.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. It's good to see you veterans affairs here today. Really appreciate all the work that you do. Today is, we'll be celebrating a recognizing November 11th as Veterans Day. Any veterans in the room can stand up so we can recognize you. Get started. Thank you all very much. So this proclamation recognized in November 11th, 2023, is Veterans Day. Whereas the 11th day of the 11th month of the 11th hour in 1918 marked the end of World War I. And whereas on November 1919, President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November 11th as the first commemoration of Armistice Day, stating, quote, "To us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service and the gratitude for the victory, both because of the thing from which it has freed us and because of the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in the councils of the nations." And whereas, all who take the same oath to support and defend our country and no veteran's service is insignificant, as every function is in support of the mission. And whereas, 16.5 million veterans, approximately 6.4% of the nation's adult population, live in the United States and approximately 4,000 live in Calaveras County. Public comment?
Good morning, Honorable Board. I am Brian Galizia. I'm the county veteran service officer. And I'd like to give a brief statement that I took from hopeforthewarriors.org. And it's entitled, "An Honor No One Wants." What is a gold star family and how is it different from a blue star family? Honestly, until I began working in the veteran service office, I had not heard of either the blue or the gold star families. So what are they? The blue star family consists of the immediate family members of a service member during a time of conflict. It's a reminder that service members don't serve alone. In 2015, it was reported a total of 1,728,710 family members served alongside their active duty service member. And of that number, 1,076,803 were children and 641,639 were spouses. The gold star family is the immediate family members of a fallen member, service member who died while serving in a time of conflict. President Wilson is believed to have coined the term gold star mother. He authorized a suggestion made by the Women's Committee of the Council of National Defenses that mothers who had lost a child who served in the war wear a traditional black mourning armband with a gold star in 1918. The blue star family can be recognized by the blue star service flag. It has a thick red border and a blue star in the middle. The number of stars on the flag corresponds to the number of individuals currently serving in the armed forces from that family. The gold star family can display a gold star service flag for service members who were killed or died while in service in the armed forces from causes other than dishonorable. A gold star is placed over the blue star on the blue star service flag so that the blue star forms a border and creates the gold star service flag. Spouses, parents, and children of service members killed in the line of duty are authorized by the U.S. Department of Defense to wear gold star lapel pins. Please join me in honoring not only our veterans and those who currently serve, but the gold star families as well as their incredible, for their incredible sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Other public comment? Comments from the board? Seeing none? And I think that this is very germane to the world of conflict that we're facing today that we all take into account the sacrifices that are made and pray for peace if you're a praying person. Is there a motion from the board?
I would move this item.
Moved by Supervisor Topfennel, is her second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the County of Calaveras Board of Supervisors, but claims Saturday, November 11th, 2023, as Veterans Day and encourages its residents to celebrate our veterans and show their gratitude. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on an agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during allotted time period, we will continue to the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So we are open for general public comments. Any public comment this morning? An item is not on the agenda?
Seeing, oh, we got Al.
Not too much public comment this morning. In the Wisconsin Department of Commerce and the Wisconsin County Taxpayer Association, we have some good news. We have the opportunity to honor the benefits, but also in a certain way on the Wisconsin Constitution, which would have been required to take the oath to support. There is a paragraph or clause that we can add to some of the planning documents, which basically says that our bodies of this law is seeking the harmony of the uses. It also recognizes the rights to life, liberty, and property as specified in the Wisconsin Constitution. That clause can set the proper term for any regulation that we do. This could also apply to strategic plan, which was done a while back and does not write clauses in it, but it could, I think, with agreement with the board. One of the reasons why we want to pay respect to the clauses to protect property rights is because we have a problem with people, especially young people, finding a place to live, and there isn't a cost. They have to go out of county. They can't stay there. Nobody even wants to stay there. They can't stay there. And as a result, negative consequences to having problems in building. Mainly, the main problem in building is overregulation. This can be taken care of with a little thought about property rights. There's an alternate to the general plan called alternate D, where the first three alternates are chosen for the proven composition of the general plan. However, alternate D ought to be looked at, which basically recognizes the rights of people who are, particularly in down zoning. When you down zone property, that means taking away usage that the property owner has when he bought the property. It becomes a problem and a loss of property value, which is really taking. So in looking at alternate D, this could be a wake-up call to be more conscious of property rights when we deal with these decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al. Any other public comments? Seeing none? Closed public comments and move on to the next item on the agenda. Next item is consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, that would be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any board member who should remove an item? No? Is there any staff member?
There are no online requests.
Okay. Is there any member of the public who should remove an item from the consent? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion for the entire consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Garamendi.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. We will now move on to the regular agenda. It's item number 14. It's agreement with, from the administrative office to, one, receive a presentation from the Leonakis of the Phase 1 program and feasibility study for the District Attorney Building. And, two, authorize the board chair to execute an agreement with Leonakis to, for the Phase 2 architectural and engineering services for schematic design through construction in the amount in occupancy $510,840, with a term ending November 6th, 2026. And, three, authorize the county executive officer to sign amendments to the agreement if so, if any, so long as it does not affect or not exceed the amount. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good.
All right. Are we ready?
Good morning. Can we get your name?
Sure. My name is Deborah L. Lasniewska. I am a licensed architect and I am a principal in the civic studio at Leonakis.
All right.
So we were brought on board to essentially work with the county in developing the plans for the district, the new district attorney's office. And as some of you may be aware, there are existing district attorney's facilities here on the campus, as well as other locations through the campus or through the community. So today I want to talk a little bit about the project itself, the process that we went through with the stakeholders group. We developed some conceptual budgets and then we came up with some final recommendations for the group, so I'm going to go through that process. So currently, we have two sites that house the district attorney's components. There's four components in the building. We've got the district attorney and staff. We've got the investigations unit. We've got the victim services unit. And then we've got a potential plenary space, which would be a multifunctional space that they have requested. And so right now, we've got two sites that house those components. And one of them is Building G, which is right here on the county campus. The victim services unit is on the other site across town. And then they also occupy some portable trailers, storage containers, and some off-site storage. As a result, the office is somewhat disparate and it really affects the efficiency of the services that the, that the office offers. It also creates security concerns for the staff. And then it does not necessarily reflect a very professional appearance to both the public and the staff members for acquiring staff, for example, and recruiting people. So as you all know, the county received $5 million in ARPA funding. And that's an all-in number, and that means that it includes the hard costs, which we consider construction costs. It also includes the soft costs, which include things like architectural engineering fees, testing and inspections, permitting fees, geotechnical reports, civil surveys, things like that. So when you back out all those soft costs, as well as furniture fixtures and equipment, we're looking to furnish the building when we're done, we're left with approximately about $4 million in construction monies. And unfortunately, the program called for 13,000 square feet, which is, in today's construction dollars, is equivalent to about a $10 million building. So we realized right away that we don't have enough money to build the 13,000 square feet. So we suggested to the county that we work with you on a feasibility, a budget feasibility and programming study, where we look at what are the programming requirements and then how can we get a building built for the funding that you have. So we started the process, the programming process, and we worked with the stakeholders group. So that's the administration office here at the county, as well as the users of the building. And we went through several different exercises to define the project priorities. We sent out surveys to all the building users to find out what their current situation is and what their, what their needs are for the future. We had four stakeholder meetings over a period of time where we introduced vision boards to try to get an idea of the aesthetic that the users wanted for the building. We talked about what the priorities are. We looked at space programming and what the needs for the different uses were. And then we had to make some decisions on what those priorities were. So the priorities for the group were really providing security for the staff and attorneys, two, create a shared entry vestibule between all the various components so that the public knows where to enter, and then all services are provided in one location. The users needed more space. Right now, they're very cramped with space, and it affects their workflow and function. So we wanted to look at what are the workflows and how can we create efficiencies? Right now, there's a lack of meeting space and privacy space. They use one of the portable buildings for conferences and Zoom calls, which is actually a separate building. And then there's a need for more collaboration space and a preference to have a more professional environment, and then bring in some natural light into the building. So we started originally by looking at all the space requirements. And essentially, we confirmed that 13,000 square feet was pretty accurate that the county had come up with, but that puts us at that $10 million range. So we had to come up with some solutions on how to bring that number down. So we started with some adjacency diagrams and, and flow diagrams, trying to figure out what the circulation of the site might be and what that building might look like, and come up with some test fit plans on what the plans might look like fully integrated. And then we worked with our third-party cost estimator to put together some conceptual budgets. And so originally, we found that the easiest way to lower the cost was to get rid of that component for that multi-use plenary space. That was about $2.7 million in and of itself, so that was the first thing to go. They don't have that space currently, and although it is a want, it was not necessarily a need. So that was the first step. And then we looked at what happens if we phase the construction? If we put in the attorneys and staff now and come back later with the investigations group or the victim services group? That definitely brought the, the cost down, but it doesn't necessarily solve the issues of having everybody in disparate locations and working separately. And so what we realized was, once we reduced that square footage to about 5,500 square feet, we really started to get within our budget. So then we looked at the site, and if we got rid of that plenary space, we could also get rid of some of the associated parking that goes with that and the site costs associated with it. And then we looked at what happens if we go to a 5,500 square foot metal building or if we go to a modular building? What does that, how does that affect the cost? And we looked at those costs and compared them. And we looked at what happens if we eliminate some of the parking and just do minimal site development? And then we workshopped with the district attorney to find out, could we actually get all the services into 5,500 square feet? And we actually came up with a, an ideal square footage of 5,720 square feet. It basically shares a lot of the collaboration spaces and the meeting spaces. It reduces a lot of the offices to minimum size. And, and it really, we really worked on finding some efficiencies in the building plan. And as a result, we were able to implement some cost-saving strategies. One, we eliminated an asphalt parking lot in lieu of a gravel parking lot for the secure parking for the staff and attorneys. We opted to go with mini-split HVAC units instead of a package unit, where each individual space has their own unit and they can zone it accordingly, using very basic finishes, nothing too fancy. Minimal landscaping, so we had to eliminate some trees, for example, from the parking lot, and just really keep the landscaping as minimal as possible. And then we used a very conservative construction contingency of about 10%, which we would like to have a little bit higher, but that is one of our minimums, is 10%. And in doing so, we were able to get the cost down to where we need them to be, or close anyways. So our recommendations, we looked at a pre-engineered metal building, and although it made sense for over 10,000 square feet, once we got below 10,000 square feet, we really lost that economy of scale, and so the price went up significantly. We looked at the modular building, which is very similar to the building they have now. And although if we got the very basic modular building, the cost would be low, any upgrades really brought it right back up to conventional framing costs. And then we looked at light metal gauge versus wood construction. And the light metal gauge really only added about $75,000 in construction costs, but it really adds to ease in construction, lower maintenance, and higher fire resistance. So our recommendation was to go with the 5720 square feet with metal, light gauge metal construction. And that puts us at a amount of about $6 million when you add back in all the soft costs and furniture costs. And that takes us to a budget of $6,030,000. So as a result, we're asking for an additional $1,030,000 to the Attorney General's project budget to cover those additional costs. So I'd like to open it up for questions.
Any board questions?
Quick question. This is Marcos or Teresa question. We have $4 million in ARPA and $1 million in judicial construction. That's how we came up with our five, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So your ask is for another $1 million?
That's correct. A million and 30,000.
Supervisor Hubbard?
Yes, I'd like to ask, and this obviously doesn't incorporate any of the storage or storage containers or off-site storage that would still need to be kept on?
It does incorporate some of the storage. I don't know that it would incorporate all the storage. It does incorporate some vehicle evidence storage, so that off-site storage could come on site. And it does bring in some of the storage containers. The district attorney's office is currently undergoing a digitization of many of their files, so they'll have to keep at least, I think it's one year of critical files in office, but after that, they would be digitized and kept on the cloud, essentially.
Supervisor Stopper? No? That's the rendition?
This is a conceptual rendition, yes. Yeah. So the, the user group really liked an agricultural-style building that brought in some natural materials. So we looked at the barn shape and bringing in wood and metal. They liked the idea of a metal building, but of course, there's more cost with the metal building. So we proposed a metal facade with stucco finish on the sides and a little bit of wood, just to add a little bit of special something to the front.
And that's not gravel parking lot?
Not in the front, but it would be in the back.
It would be in the back.
That's an existing parking lot that we would reutilize.
Okay. I'll open it up to public. Any public?
Here, I got one more question.
I'm sorry. Supervisor Garamendi?
So we have, we discussed several times, the budget is $5 million. So this project wouldn't come before us with another $1 million price tag unless staff administration had a plan for that million or district attorney had a million hidden somewhere, right? I mean, we can't just magically make up a million bucks. So what's the plan presented here?
So yeah, so we, as we worked through this, this was the, the minimal size we were able to come up with. And yes, it is a $6 million price tag as opposed to $5 million. Currently, our thought is we have just under $7 million in our county capital. A million dollars could come out of there to pay for this. We estimate it's an additional 800 to a million, just because the ARPA money is sitting in a fund. It's accruing interest, so that account is growing right now. So it won't quite be a million dollars, but it's approximately just under that.
So zero-sum game, we take money from, the other project we've got for this account is the animal shelter.
Correct.
So you're suggesting we take a million from the animal shelter and put it towards the DA building? So you're suggesting we take a million from the animal shelter and put it towards the DA building?
I am not suggesting taking money from the animal shelter. So we took the ARPA money essentially and we split it in half. Half of the DA building, half for the animal shelter. I'm not suggesting touching that money at all. I'm suggesting looking at what we currently have in our county capital fund and pulling from that.
So we've recently gone through a very extensive process to estimate what our capital improvement program needs to look like over the next five years. And so we do believe that we could take this million dollars to support the district attorney's building from the capital improvement program and still maintain our existing infrastructure for the county.
Any other question? Barbara, you want to say anything?
Good morning, Barbara Yu, district attorney. I definitely do not want you to take money from the animal shelter. Absolutely not. Yes, yes. And that's it, that's all I have, yeah. Nothing else. So first of all, I want to thank admin and of course, DAB for all the work they've done on this. This has been a long time coming. We've been in our building, it was a little embarrassing to show, showing up there, especially the blue trailer that's no longer blue. Because we've been there for almost 19 years, okay? And those of you who've been to my office know the condition. You know, I always have to warn you, don't trip on the carpet. You know, don't look up because the panels, the panels aren't complete and they might fall. So as much, as much as we want a building, we are very aware of what the ask is. I'm encouraged to hear the comments from admin and the work they've done to try to figure out how to fund the rest of it without taking money from the animal shelter. You know, we did have long discussions about trying to go a cheaper route, maybe with a modular. But you know, none of us felt good about spending that much money, even if it's a little bit less on another modular and something similar to what we have. We don't support that as an option. It just does not seem like a good use of taxpayer money. And you know, if, we don't have, we don't have a nonprofit attached to our office, so I can't, I can't say that we'll have a bake sale to try to come up with the money to, to replenish the coffers. But we are extremely pleased with what Lionocas came up with. They definitely listened. And you know, the artist's rendition is, is just beautiful. I think it would fit in well with the campus. I think it fits in well with the county and what the county represents. And you know, as much as I've tried not to get my hopes up too much because we've been through this many, many times before, you know, I can't help but envision what it would look like walking down, you know, the pergola with all the communities on that archway and then walking into what is a proper respectful space for the work that my staff does, the men and women of the DA's office. And if you look at the components, it all fits. We worked very hard to get it to all fit in the smaller square footage. We do, we need the 13,000 square feet to do what we want to do and to build for the future and to serve the community the way we want to serve the community. But we're willing to make it work in, in whatever the county can give us. And if you do look at this very closely, we have investigations on one side and we have a victim services on the other side. And I explained to you, the architects, that that was our priority to bring that all together so that we can be more efficient. Right now, we're paying a lease. We have a lease for the, the victim services space. And so you know, I know that it's, it would take a while to add up, but we're paying monthly on that, on that space. Money that we could be using for personnel to, to better serve the public. And so, so it's not, you know, I didn't bring that number with me, but there is that, you know, kind of offset eventually when we could get all under one roof. We are working on digitizing our old files. So hopefully our storage can get smaller and smaller. We wouldn't be paying for our offsite leased space for the storage. And you know, overall, we'll just be more efficient and we can finally go forward and not have gone this far and then pull back and have all that money go to waste. And you know, I think from one of our initial meetings, I, I think the, Deb kind of sensed that I have a little bit of PTSD with going down this road and spending money on a project only to have it fall apart. You know, we're pretty sensitive to that. We did not want to go down this road unless we could get it finished. So we're hopeful that you will follow the guidance and wisdom of admin when they may do make the recommendation that, that the board figure out a way to pay for, pay for what Lionocas is recommending. Any questions?
Questions?
I have, well, you said them and that's for the, so this building allow for any future growth of increase of employee or other services that will be needed?
It, it doesn't include as much growth as we would like to see. It does bring all the, the components under one roof and it accommodates the existing staff plus some additional staff, but it doesn't necessarily look far into the future as far as square footage.
So it'll be difficult to add on?
So as far as adding on specific office space, if we, if we were to grow someday in, in, in our staffing levels, that would not be easy to do. We do have a couple of the, the smaller meeting spaces that are built in. The meeting spaces that are built in are not quite, are not very large. They're more medium meeting spaces that are about the size of a larger sized office. So theoretically, we could convert those to offices and then lose our meeting spaces. We've done worse. And once again, you're all welcome to come and take a tour of my office and see how creative we've been with our working spaces. With the light gauge metal, there is the opportunity someday to build in the large plenary space that we want. The large multifunctional programming space that was part of, part of the larger vision. And that was a space that we were hopeful, hope, in hopes of sharing with the grand jury, right? It could be the grand juries on, on their day with private offices on one side. But then my office would be able to use the space for the large meeting and community meetings, restorative justice programming, trial practice and trainings and so that we, and for our own criminal jury activities. So we didn't have to continue borrowing spaces elsewhere. You know, but if it, if it's a choice between having a proper space for victims or this shared plenary space, the, the choice is obvious. So that's what was cut out. And I think one of the advantages with the light gauge metal and the, the way the building is situated is it would be something that could be expanded on, if you're, if you're looking at this visual, the back right-hand side. And so it would be physically kind of stepped behind and off to the side of the human resources building. So, so that was one of the designs, is that correct?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And absolutely, I've always believed you needed a different building. I mean, that's, and I appreciate the fact, you know, to quote Mick Jagger, you can't always get what you want, get what you need. Working with that strategy and coming up with this plan. I guess my main question is going to continue to be. Admin says we've got an extra million bucks. I'd like to know sort of what are we not going to do in exchange for doing this? So you know, we've only got so much money, got so many plans. We've got a capital improvement plan out there. So zero sum game, what's, what's, how are we shifting things around before we commit to the extra million?
So that's why we went through the capital improvement program so intensively. I have to commend Marcos and Denise. They reached out to every single department to determine what our capital improvement needs are over the next five years, what those costs are going to be before we decided that we could move forward with this. So at this time, we believe we would not be sacrificing anything in our capital improvement program. We are not taking this from the animal services side.
But I mean, are we taking it from HVAC or computer upgrades?
So HVAC upgrades were, yeah. HVAC upgrades were done a few years ago. Right. About roofs, we're, we're going, yeah, we're going through the roofing process right now. You'll notice that Building A is getting a new roof. We do have a plan for how we're moving through our buildings to make sure that that maintenance will occur. We believe it's very important that we maintain our assets because it's much more costly for us if we don't get these roofing projects done and we have major leaks. And then the repairs on that would be more expensive. So we have definitely worked with departments to look at what those capital improvement programs need to look like, even our IT systems. We've, we've really combed through that capital improvement program budget. We have an outlined program. Marcos might be able to speak more to that. But we do have a very comprehensive program moving forward and we do know what we're going to be repairing over the next five years with the funding that we have and that we believe we will be adding to that program as well.
Employee safety also.
What we're definitely looking at that, as you know, we do have a safety program that we're looking to implement for public works right now because there are some building upgrades that need to be done there. But yes, we are looking at that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any public comments?
That's a beautiful building. If it were a two-story, it would then be closer home. With the courthouse and litter, new buildings that were built and could possibly have a similar facade. The reason for buying a two-story is to reduce the cost. And it might require some ongoing expense of an elevator and some other things perhaps. But I wonder if this was considered, okay?
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there any further discussion inside?
Just to Mr. Garamendi's point, says financing. And it says the necessary budget appropriations are, are included in the for year 2022, 23 capital improvement projects budget. So with those being qualified inside the budget, the extra million dollars can just simply be transferred over. And it doesn't need?
I think the board's action today is to, would be to approve a contract, which is for roughly $500,000. So that doesn't, that money's already been budgeted to the extent there than our future contract and require a budget transfer that will need a forfeit.
So we're not, we're not committing to the whole enchilada right now?
Committing to 510,000 per the conceptual and through construction. It'll come back to us for that. Do you, do you have a timeframe? Do you know when you will be bringing this back?
So the plan is to start our, to continue our design process starting in December with construction start, well, we have to be in by December of 2024 for the funding. If, if I've got that correct. We have to be in the building by December 2024. I'll let Marcos.
Yeah, no, 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 our, our funds have to be obligated by December 31st of 2024. So, so we'll go through the design process and then we'll go off our bid for the construction process. And then we'll enter into that contract. But so in terms of timeline, we're looking over the next, I'll leave it for Deborah to say how long it'll take her to sign that, but then we'll start the bid process for the construction portion.
Typically about nine months, I would say, and then probably about two years for construction.
To start construction or finish construction?
To finish construction.
So are, are you providing actual construction drawings?
We would, right.
You will?
Yeah, so our fee includes drawings through the permitting process and then construction administration through the whole construction process. So at the end of the project, we would, we would be complete at that point.
All right. Any other board questions? I'm open for a motion. Sumo. Motion by Supervisor Stopper.
I'll second it.
Second, Supervisor Garamendi, I was going to step down and motion up myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. You're on your way, Barbara, out there all these years, you and I.
Yes, I've been in there.
Congratulations.
When it's been leaking, Barbara.
I am going to move, we're going to continue with the regular agenda, but I am going to move item 16 next in front of item 15. And this is an informational item from adult services to receive an informational update about the county veteran service office. Brian, I don't know how long the next one's going to go. And you guys are, I want to get you back to work at your office. It is?
Good morning again. Once again, I am Brian Galicia. I am the county veteran service officer. And I am pleased to present a report on the status of our office and the work that we do. So this report is providing information from local records from fiscal year 2021 and 21, 21, 22 and 23. Just a brief look at the office. Our office is staffed with county veteran service officer, one county, one veteran service representative, a part-time clerical assistant, a veterans program coordinator and a veterans outreach coordinator. Our program coordinator facilitates support groups throughout the county. Currently, there are four groups that happen every other week. One in Copperopolis, one in Murphy's, one in Valley Springs. We began a women's group here in San Andreas. We didn't get a lot of participation, so we are setting that aside until after the first of the year. And we are coming up with a different strategy and on how to reach our women veterans in the county. Contacts, people, veterans coming to our office, their families coming by type. So in person in 2021, 2022, you can see we had 872 in-person contacts versus 932 in 22, 23 for an increase of 6.8%. By phone, we had a slight decrease, almost half a percent. But emails dropped and we considered that large drop happening because so many were reaching out by email during COVID. Didn't want to come in, so that was a better time, way for them to get ahold of us. As far as scheduled appointments, we had 234 versus 256. We had almost 10% increase. In outreach, the total number of people contacted is significant. An increase of 138%. And that was due to the hiring of an outreach coordinator who did a really good job in, in going out and meeting our veterans and pulling them in. As far as claims submitted, we did an increase of about 11 and a half percent. That's compensation, the low income pension program appeals. College fee waiver claims. We had one, one, one dependent graduate apparently, so it dropped just a hair. Healthcare enrollments increased by eight, a little over 8%. And that is probably due to the implementation of the PACT Act because the PACT Act does, does make it healthcare enrollment available to more veterans than it had before. Medical cost avoidance. We increased the number of, of claims that we did for that by over, almost 65%. And that is, that's a program where the more that we do, the more money we get from DHCS in return. Continuing with appeals claims in 21, 22, we submitted 38 versus 53. So almost 40% increase. 204 to 268 pension compensation and dependents claims. We had unfortunately a 50% rise in burial benefits claims. And then for surviving families of 11%. So both fiscal years combined, the total appeals claims that we submitted was 91. With 38 approved, that's a 41% approval rate for those types of claims. For compensation pension independent claims, we have, we're at 62% approval rate. And you'll have to excuse me because the bar is, so we had an 80% approval increase for burial benefits and surviving benefits, almost 60% increase. Awarded benefits, retroactive benefits in 21, 22 is just under eight, just under 800,000. For 22, 23, it is nine and a half, increase of almost 20%. With new monthly benefits, almost 10% increase for new monthly benefits. And this is all money coming into the county economy. College fee waivers, like I said, we lost one, one person who graduated, so there was a little bit of a drop in the benefits that were issued. But it is still a popular program, and as children reach college age, we see that that's only gonna increase. Our status, we are committed to fully serve every veteran who walks in our office. We've had some setbacks. In January, we sustained some flooding with the, the weather that we had, and we were displaced for about four months until the repairs were made. In June, we lost our clerical support, and in July, we lost our outreach coordinator. However, as we move on, we have a new clerical staff who's been with us almost two months. We will be welcoming a new outreach coordinator pretty soon. And we've created a volunteer, veterans volunteer program that we have, we're hoping to have up and running relatively soon, that's gonna help, help our veterans, especially those with no transportation, or those who can no longer get up and do things around their own house. And we're really looking forward to that program. So to, this is our contact information and our hours. We do have our walk-in day every Thursday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM and 2:00 to 4:00. No appointment needed otherwise. We ask that veterans call us and we will be happy to schedule an appointment for them for any of the other days that we are available. I'd like in the, with a, with a statement, generally I do a success story, but I kinda switch it up a little bit. I'll do success stories in May. But what, what else does the VSO do? As I've just shown you the statistics from the work that we've done, but numbers can only tell you so much. The work that we do, we kinda look at as preventative care for our veterans. Of course, the first part is filling out the claims for the disability and the, and the pension and everything, which helps the veterans financially through a monthly disability payment and allows them access to healthcare through the VA. So it allows them to better manage their disabilities than before and kinda lowering their worry and anxiety. The other part of what this care is, is actually caring for the person. We do our best to ensure that our veterans are safe. When people think of veterans with disability caused by their service, most of us think of those coming home with missing limbs or major injuries. And while there are numerous of those types of disabilities, there are so many more that you just can't see. And when I say that, a lot of times when people are saying, are gonna say, well, he's talking about PTSD. And that's true, partially. We have been seeing more and more veterans coming in to file claims for PTSD, anxiety, and depression, and we don't see it slowing down anytime soon. And one of the more unknown conditions veterans are filing more claims for is what's called, we refer to as MST, which is military sexual trauma. According to the Disabled Veterans of America, it is estimated that one in three females veterans and one in 100 male veterans in the VA healthcare system are reporting, experiencing MST. It is important to note that by the percentage, by percentage, women are at greater risk. However, nearly 40% of those who disclose having experienced MST are men. Now, I started in the VSO in February of 2021, and it became, I became accredited to do claims in August of that year. Since that time, I have personally filed claims for so many things you cannot see, which are devastating to the veteran and their families. I have filed 17 PTSD claims, 13 claims for depression, 13 for anxiety, seven claims for different, different cancers, 10 claims for various heart conditions, and two claims for Parkinson's disease, both of which have been recently approved. While we assist with getting the claims filed for these conditions, we also refer veterans to different resources to help manage their lives while living with these conditions. We do everything we can to help in getting them to medical appointments if they don't have transportation. We provide support groups to give them the camaraderie and the safe place they need to talk. We help veterans navigate the VA medical system, including speaking with the medical center patient advocates when they feel that they're not being heard. We help veterans apply for other benefits they may be eligible to, such as CalFresh, Medi-Cal, housing, and food. We make referrals and assist in any way we can within the scope of our office for our veterans. We are passionate about what we do in this office, and we generally care for all the veterans that we serve. When a veteran we've worked with passes away, it affects us. There have been, there have been times we have, we've asked ourselves, could we have done more to help this veteran? Was there, did I miss something? And while the answer to these questions typically no, we can't help but still wonder. Our number one goal in this office is to care for the veteran and provide all we can to enable them to move forward with as little worry as possible. We are the veterans advocate for Calaveras County. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I, I personally say that this office has came a long way over a short time. There was a time when we had one part-time officer, HHS.
I remember.
And now, you remember that?
Oh, yes.
It was only part-time.
Yes.
And we weren't serving very many veterans at all, because they didn't even know we existed.
We still hear that.
Yeah, and now where we're at now, and we have an actual office that is located where most people or veterans know where it's at, even their, their relatives, their children, their family members know where it's at, that they can come and get service from you and your staff. So yeah, it's come a long ways. Thank you. Supervisor Garamendi?
Just, well done. Great presentation, great work. Diez puntos, job. But my question is, you know, we're doing all, we're doing a lot of work with the Veterans Administration and the hospital, mental health work, as you referred to. How do we coordinate with, I see Wendy in the back, when county mental health services? I mean, to be a VA service, you've gotta go down the hill a bit. Do we work, are we able to have our veterans plug into our mental health services here in the county?
We can. A lot of times, it is up to the veteran who they want to get the services from, if they are enrolled in VA healthcare. And any, any veteran who is service, has a service-connected disability combined of 50% or more, their healthcare is covered 100%. So a lot of times, that is a big factor in getting them into behavioral health down at Mather, for instance. I do know the Sonora Clinic now has a couple of LCSWs on staff, and some people, they are seeing some people there as well. And I believe we have referred some of our veterans to behavioral health, county behavioral health. A lot of, a lot of the issue though sometimes is, is the coverage, the medical coverage. And a lot of our veterans don't qualify for Medi-Cal, or they have a high share of cost, which prevents them from being able to access the county services. So some of them do have things like Medicare and supplemental plans that will help them with, within their private networks. But some do, we have several who I know are involved in county, here in behavioral health at VA at this time.
Yeah, I'll just speak to that, that it is case by case and depending on what the Medi-Cal is or what the insurance is, but it is case by case. So if it's severe enough and the individual needs to be seen closer, or whatever the circumstances are. But I also wanted to thank Brian that when we go out into the field for crisis and if we discover it's a veteran, that he's really great in co responding with our crisis or law enforcement teams. So thank you, and the rest of the staff too, and the adult services, and it's appreciated. So yes, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, I'm just gonna compliment on the group, the group meetings that you guys have, walking up and down some of the main street, both in Angels and Murphy's, a lot of those folks are talking about it. And they, I was in Angel's one morning picking up coffee, and a couple of them were waiting to head up to their next meeting, and another individual walked by, and they asked why he wasn't coming. So they're also, watching them also recruit within their friend network, it's also been really amazing to watch too. So it's, it's working.
Good, and that's what we want.
Any other board comments? Seeing none, I'll bring, open it up to the public. Is there any public comments on this item? Seeing no public comments, I'll bring it back to the board. This was informational item, so thank you, Brian, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Bring us up today. Next item on our agenda is item 15. However, I see Jesse's in the room, and her presentation I have down is 20 minutes. And the one item 15, I have an hour and a half. So I, you're here for both? Okay. Then we will move on to item number 15.
Well. Are you talking about 18, 18?
No, I'm talking about item 17, Jesse's report in agriculture. So if you're here for both, we'll just move on to item 15. So the informational item from planning, received the October 26, 2023 report of the Planning Commission and provide direction of the draft greenhouse gas reduction plan implementing measures COS-5C of the 2019 general plan. Gabriel? This is your item, it's got your name written all over it.
Oh. Good morning, members of the board, CEO, county council. This item is before you today as an informational item. The Planning Commission has spent some extensive amount of time going over the greenhouse gas plan, and if I can just remind you that we came on this path because we are trying to satisfy one of the goals of our general plan, which is to adopt a plan that is consistent to Senate Bill 32, which is we want to reduce our greenhouse gases by 40% of our 1990 numbers by the year 2030. When we started on this route, we, the first plan we received, or the first set of measures we received, did not get us there. We were definitely short of, of meeting our target. But with consistency and a lot of hard work and questions, the Planning Commission went to work and the consultants went to work as well. And now we have a, a plan that I think meets our goals. However, it comes with measures that somewhat in, in certain areas are controversial. We've heard from the ag community, and that is one of the reasons why Jesse followed the ag commissioner is here this morning, to express some concerns. Now, we did not do this plan in a vacuum. When we started this deliberation, we invited all the departments within the county who may have, who the plan may impact to have some input in the, in the plan itself. And, and I think we've done that. I have to commend the Chair of the Planning Commission, Michelle Plotnik, and the Vice-Chair, Tim Ladish, for an excellent work that they've done. They've been very, very diligent in making sure that the plan meets the goals of the county as, as well as the goals of the general plan. So because this is an informational item, I've, you know, I probably, you know, you've, you've got a lot of information in front of you and which I think you've digested, because I received comments and questions from, from some members of the board. But the direction we're seeking today is to, is for us to give us direction as to which, what, what, what do we want to do? This is an informational, informational item. We're not making any decisions this morning. We just want to present to you what has transpired over several months of deliberation on, on this item, and for the board to give us a direction as to which we're to go. I don't know if Michelle and/or Tim would like to have, say anything regarding, regarding the plan? Tim, Michelle? Tim?
If it would be in response to.
Can you come back to the microphone so we can get it on?
I have to talk to people that much.
We've received some questions from a member of the, of the board, and I, I could speak to those if you would like me to.
Absolutely.
Okay. One, that we will be working with Angels Camp to make sure that there's a coordination of their plan and our plan, since the general plan provision, make sure that, that our plan covers the entire county, but that doesn't mean that we're gonna dictate to Angels Camp. We're gonna work that out. The, there's, there were some questions about the figures that the consultants had changed from when they started and where they are now. And those are extremely good questions, because I asked them that, those questions myself. And as far as the, the change of the 2018 emissions figure, the consultant said, since the original inventory submission, California Air Resources Board CARB has updated the off-road emission models used to calculate off-road emissions. SBC has updated the 2018 GHG inventory with the new, newly released and more accurate data and methodologies that better represent the county. So that, that was their response as far as the 2018 emissions change. I asked about the, the 2030 figure and why there was a difference. And the answer from the consultants was, since the original submission by SBC, the forecast has changed due to the improvements made to the 2018 GHG inventory described in the response above. The, as far as the 1990 GHG emissions, the difference there, they said, since the original submission, the 1990 GHG emissions estimate has changed for two reasons. One, the 2018 GHG emissions inventory itself changed in terms of its total GHG emissions results. And two, the methodology to calculate the 1990 GHG emissions estimate from the 2018 GHG emissions inventory was updated to better reflect county trends and characteristics. And also, they added, California's climate laws rely upon a 1990 baseline year to track GHG reduction progress. Since neither GHG emissions nor countywide activity data are available for 1990, emissions estimate was back calculated based on the change in population in the county between 2018 and 1990. The new methodology considers additional changes between 2018 and 1990, e.g., population changes, along with other factors that changed during that time, such as improved fuel efficiencies and associated GHG emission factors. So those are the answers. So those are the answers the consultants gave their calculation. We, we have no way of substantiating any of this, but the result of those changes was to make it, make the plan so that it did conform with the forty percent standard that was set, is set by the general plan. If, when I did the math, it turns out that the, the larger the nineteen ninety figure is, the better we are off. It doesn't seem to make sense just intuitively, but I don't have much of an intuition when it comes to math. So those were some of the questions that were asked and those were the answers that the consultants gave. So we're better off with the new figures than we were with the old figures is where, where I come down.
Thank you.
And if you'd like any further of these questions answered, we're, we're here.
Okay. Thank you. This is more of a question for Gabriel. Can we have that, can we have that information somehow attached? Because currently all the documents on the planning website does not reflect that information. So that makes it very confusing. So when we're, when with this document and then those current documents that the planning commissioner has been working with, you, it's not noted. So if there's any type of notation of that in the future, if it's not already.
We will do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that. So in conclusion, what we're seeking here is direction.
You looking for direction?
Yes. Go east.
That's a big question. Do you have any board comments? Before we go to public comment, we have any supervisor, stopper? No?
Where is it?
You're from the public. Okay, we're gonna, before we make any comments, we're gonna hear from the public. Is there any public comments on this item?
Allison, Taxpayer Association. Well, I think I have some good news. For a long time, it was believed that carbon dioxide causes global warming. In other words, carbon dioxide was considered almost like a poison. Well, the good news is some reputable scientists have discovered that carbon dioxide does not cause global warming, it follows global warming. At the beginning of the climate, at the initial process, the climate scale process, there was a film together by Al Gore. It was entitled, you know, Unconstable Truth. It's a pretty famous work of art. Well, in the film, it showed the spikes of carbon dioxide and global warming combined together. But the Arctic ice cores showed a really different picture. It showed the first spike being global, the second spike following the first spike was increased carbon dioxide. So it just repeated for many, many years. What this tells us, you know, partially is that carbon dioxide follows global warming. That doesn't answer the question of what causes global warming. The same scientists that discovered this also think that it has to do with the sun flows and some other, you know, land terrestrial forces. So what this means for us is since carbon dioxide is not a poison, it's a nutrient. Plants need this. In those times where carbon dioxide was high, civilizations flourish because they planted food because the carbon dioxide was higher. So considering everything that we would do with regulations, the carbon dioxide is a nutrient, not a poison. Thank you.
Yeah. Jessie, are you gonna speak as staff or are you gonna do your personal?
I, I was just gonna just do a quick personal. So I, actually, I just wanted to actually thank the members of the planning commission because I did submit some comments on behalf of my department, but not even all of them were in this letter just because they were really wonderful to work with. So I just wanted to give them my thanks and also say to just the public in general, if they have questions, that they're a wonderful resource. That was basically it.
Okay. So I was gonna give you more time if you wanted to talk.
Oh, no, actually, I, I think Scott wants to come up from UC and, and he's a powerhouse of knowledge, so I'm gonna let him have his say.
All right. Okay. All right. You got a lot to follow.
I know. Towerhouse. Yeah. Good morning, boards. Scott Onetto, Farm Advisor with the University of California. And I apologize, I didn't get a chance to make, submit comments to the planning commission on the draft, but I did want to just maybe post a few here today. I, I do have a few concerns about maybe where some of the numbers were derived from, specifically as it relates to agriculture, since that's my field of study. Another one that I did have a concern about was measure AG three, the reduced methane emissions from livestock. With us being such a, a very large livestock-driven county, I think it's important to note that I think livestock are part of the climate change solution. When I looked at some of the data, it said that livestock account for four percent of the greenhouse gases nationwide, but only beef cattle, beef cattle account for two percent. And so I wanted to just say that beef production occurs on about fifty percent of our lands in the U.S. and that number is probably about the same for California and I would say it's probably even higher here in Calaveras County. And these lands are mostly privately owned and huge carbon sink, if not grazed as part of a working landscape. And I think, you know, if we make these sort of, these numbers that, you know, we're gonna reduce methane emissions from livestock fermentation, inter fermentation by twenty percent over, you know, the next few years, I think that comes at a cost to these working landscapes. And so I think we have to think very carefully with what that number means and what that, what that policy would look like, because I think if these lands aren't grazed, they would be lost to, to conversion, up to some other use. So I think just, yeah, that's, that's the one, I think, major comment that I had. I was quickly looking to see if there was anything else that I wrote down that I wanted to mention. And I apologize, I kind of went through this very quickly this morning, just trying to make some notes. But yeah, I think that's probably the largest issue that I had with, with the current draft that was posted. So, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any other public comment? No other public comment? I will bring it back to the board. Supervisor Stoffer, your lifetime?
Oh, I thank Mr. Onetto for bringing up his point on that. And there's been a lot of comments and everything. I do want to also thank the planning commission as a whole, but the two that are here today for their in-depth work on this and everything to bring us to this point. Mr. Onetto has a very good point. You know, grasslands seem to sequester more carbon dioxide than, than forests, according to certain studies with, within other universities throughout the world. But this is part of the issue, what we're working forward today on getting a certain number of reductions into this. I think that, that sequestering was probably not part, or part of the, part of what was put forward to us in consideration for rural counties so much as urban areas when they did this plan for the state as a whole. So, you know, just, just as one, my suggestion moving forward is that we consider this, the, the OHV thing for ag also where, you know, people, the concerns on being able to work your ag land with, with the OHVs that are needed to be able to apply that, you know, the, our cattle ranchers with methane production reduction. I think that moving forward, we're so close on the line of where we need to be to be in compliance with the state that we move forward with something of what we have. And then this being a working document, let's keep our minds open to doing a study further on sequester carbon dioxide throughout the county because of all of our open space and then apply that before these dates come up for us to get to that so that we can work the numbers so that we can provide for our ranchers when it comes to them, their cows being able to fart and, and, you know, people, I mean, Calaveras being a pro-ag community, we need to be able to let them use the proper vehicles to apply, you know, to get their jobs done throughout Calaveras County. So that's my suggestion on this information item as we move forward.
Supervisor Garmody, you can follow that.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to follow it up, Ben, but I'm pretty sure the county don't ask for permission. And Scott, thank you so much for your comments. You know, I carry your, the book on Florum Pharma that you wrote and I thank you every time that it's not an app because apps don't generally come in useful where I need that book. So, thank you. There's something for everybody to dislike in this, in this document, and I think that planning commission has done a yeoman's work and bring it together and making sure it's something that might work for us. To Ben's point, this is a living document. Science is changing, opinions are changing, we can update this, but it's also something that the state of California is telling us we have to do. And we either do it voluntarily now or we do it, we're mandated to do it down the road. And this process of keeping this moving and coming up with the plan allows Calaveras to perhaps be at the, the carrot end where we get the incentives for doing the right thing versus where we normally are, which is at the back end getting beaten by the state. And so this is, this is, this is an opportunity for us. Nothing's perfect. This is going to change the carbon sequestration, as you noted. That science is going to evolve and we can incorporate that and get credit for the good planning that we are doing here. It's encapsulated in the general plan. So I agree with you, Ben. I say continue. Let's take this, let's get a plan in place and, but let's also keep in mind, this is not the gospel. As science and data changes, we need to change also.
To a point of our strategic plan, we've keeping that a living document. It's to be on the desk, not on the bookshelf. This is something else we need to keep on.
In the same position as the strategic plan.
You know, it's not going to be put on the shelf and forgotten about. We need to stay on top of it.
Supervisor Hubbard?
I'm in alignment with both supervisors here and feel that it is a living document and it needs to be realistic for the way that we live in this county. And that's gonna take more work. And I really want to thank also the ag commission and Gabriel. Thank you, Michelle, for all the help you did getting me up to speed.
I, I will say this, I want to thank both of you for, for all the work and hours and hours that you put into this to get the document. I, I know you, you went through a lot. It's not even close to what it originally was. You guys did great work on that and it, and it is a living document at, at this point. We're not adopting this as gospel right now. We're trying to move forward and get to the position that we're supposed to be in, like Supervisor Gimmerit, he said, with the state, so we can be on the positive end of something instead of a negative end of something. And again, even, even as we go forward, just like our general plan is a living document, it can be changed as things change and we go forward, we can make those adjustments to it. And I would like to go forward myself with what we have initially here and then if, when it comes back to us, we can have further discussion of it. So it's an informational item. Is there any other comments from the board on it? If not, thank you very much, Gabriel. Thank you very much, commissioners, for your work and we'll move forward. And believe me, I know it was a lot of work. It was a lot of work you guys did. Thank you. Jessie, now we'll move on to seventeen. It's the informational item again from agriculture to receive a presentation on Calaveras County's twenty-twenty-two agricultural crop and livestock report. Take note on the livestock report.
Do you, you have it or do you need a?
I have it.
You need a minute? We'll give you a minute.
Good morning, Chair Tom Nellie, honorable members of the board. I'm Jessie Fowler, Agriculture Commissioner, Directors of Weights and Measures, and I am here to go over the crop report. So I'm just gonna start off with just going over the letter. In accordance with section two-two-seven-nine of the California Food and Agricultural Code, I respectfully submit the twenty-twenty-two Calaveras County Crop Report. The gross crop value for the county of Calaveras was twenty-one million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, thirty-eight dollars, representing a thirteen percent increase from the twenty-twenty-one values. This year, livestock held the top two positions for the highest grossing commodities. Cattle was the leading commodity in the county with a value of twelve million, twelve million, eight hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred dollars with a sixty-one percent value increase from twenty-twenty-one. Similar, similar to last year, other livestock was the second highest grossing commodity, valued at three million, two hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Other livestock had a thirteen percent value increase from twenty-twenty-one's, two million, eight hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars. Despite the overall total increase, decreases in valuations for certain commodities still occurred. Timber expressed the most significant decrease of ninety-six percent from its twenty-twenty-one valuation. This is not isolated to Calaveras County, however. Decreased valuation occurred in twenty-three of the thirty-two timber-producing counties ranging from six point five percent to one hundred percent and averaged about sixty-six percent. One of the contributing factors of this decrease in twenty-twenty-two was brought on by the housing market demand or lack thereof. As construction is directly related to the supply and price of timber, the decreased demand for the construction of new homes in twenty-twenty-two meant an equally lower demand for timber. Additionally, unexpected weather conditions such as the freeze that occurred in April of twenty-twenty-two significantly impacted crop yields for wine grapes as well as various fruit and nut crops. The monetary values in this report are based on freight on board, prices at shipping and do not reflect the net returns or profits made by the growers. We are grateful for the ongoing work by the agricultural industry in providing food to our communities and recognize its perseverance throughout this ever-changing landscape. I'd also like to express my gratitude to those who provided the necessary information and data used in this crop report. I want to thank Pauline Montemeyer for her work on the design and data compilation of this report. She did a really great job. She also did the PowerPoint and there she is. And also, I would like to, actually, since he's here, I'd like to thank Scott Onetto from UCE because he actually truth says a lot of the numbers for us as well. So it's, it's definitely a community thing, putting all this together and just the surveys especially, getting those back, just making sure we have really good values. So. How do you go next? Oh, there it goes. Ha ha. All right. So this is just the overall value. And then that's a thirteen percent de, or increase from twenty-twenty-one. So I'm just gonna go over some of the, the three top, just kind of give you some overall trends that happens with these. trends that happens with these. So with cattle. So cattle, the prices per pound were slightly better in 2022 than 2021, but the issue with this is that there was, there was still a lot of drought. So a lot of the ranchers had to supplement, had to cull a lot of cattle just because of cost. So there was a lot more cattle going to market. So that's actually a large part of that 61% value increase. So yeah, that's pretty much that one. So in other livestock for this one, actually, the largest portion of other livestock is poultry. And with poultry, they actually saw a decent value increase of 13%. And that was actually because of the highly pathogenic avian influenza. So that actually, they had to do a lot of bird culling, the flocks domestically. Even this morning, I was reading, they had to cull a million bird flock because of this. So again, supply and demand, yeah, it's still a huge ongoing problem, especially now that all the birds are coming down the flyways. So they're expecting to see more of that locally too. But that obviously supply and demand, so that increased the value of birds on the market. All right. So rangeland, this one decreased, but is, again, this was related to drought. So there wasn't as much forage available and obviously you can't charge for something that's not there. So that is the main driver behind this guy. And then with field crops, so pastures, again, because of rangeland, there not being as much forage, a lot of people turned to pasture land. And so there was a little bit of increase in acreage. And interestingly, there's a decrease in rental fees, which was surprising, but figure. And then hay, same thing, because of drought, it affected the supply. Prices went up, especially because a lot of cowmen and women had to supplement later in the season because there was no more forage on rangeland. I was one behind. All right, so livestock products. With this one, the sheep, it looks like a significant drop, but actually that's just a correction. So last year, we, we had basically a bumper of sales and that was an unusually high number. So this is, this is just a normalization of values and, and nothing actually really that significant. And then livestock products were pretty much flat. So with the fruit and the nut, the walnut one, I was actually a little bit surprised that it was only a decrease of 4% because walnuts were pretty terrible price-wise last year. And I know at least of, of one of our major growers that didn't even bother to harvest because it would cost more to harvest than he would actually get to sell his walnuts. With olives, it is a alternating crop, so this was just an up year. So that's, that's mostly the driver there and why the price went up. And then wine grapes, of course, as you know, there was a little bit of a freeze in April of 2021 that, that had a huge impact on, on not only this county, but a lot of our surrounding counties as well, so much so that we actually did a disaster declaration for that April freeze. Yeah, like it says, some, some people lost 100% of their crop. It was pretty devastating and it had a huge impact on the, the number of grapes actually came off the vines.
Do you, do you see, we haven't had a freeze this year, but, but I noticed that there were a lot of dark grapes not getting harvested. Is that because of the heat? We didn't have the heat for the sugar content to get?
They might actually just not harvested them yet because this has been the weirdest, longest harvest ever. So it started in August and it's still trekking on. We're hoping maybe with the fact it's getting a little colder and the rain that it'll kind of wrap it up. But yeah, it's, my, my husband's a winemaker and he's still plugging along. It, it could actually be too if maybe they didn't get a contract fulfilled, they just left the fruit on the vine. But yeah, never say never, it might disappear in the next week or two.
Hopefully so because there's a lot, especially the dark ones, the white ones, the light grape, green ones, they're seem to be all harvested. It's just, and I thought maybe it was the sugar content because we didn't have the heat to get it up there, so.
Yeah, and it's, and it's usually sort of the darker skinned riddles too that they're, they, they ripen later, like you said, the bricks contact. So usually like the first ones off or some of the white grapes and then yeah, some of the, the red fruit that hangs on forever. Yeah, it's actually probably going to get a little cold now.
Add also, I was dealing with Jesse with smoke taint. A lot of prescribed burns that were happening were affecting the grapes as well. And they were grape growers that were a little upset about it.
Yeah, yeah. And that's actually something that's really interesting and I noticed that was not only our, our county, but it was also Amador, El Dorado mentioned something, and Sonoma County. So I'm hoping that, and if not, obviously I'll, I'll work with you to whoever we need to talk to, but I'm, I'm hoping that California buyer took note and pulled back there because yeah, that was, I understand what they're trying to do, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was a little alarming. Okay, all right, cover those. So other crops, this one, I did want to point out, so under nursery, it says decrease. That was actually typo. It's supposed to say increase, so yay, 290% increase, which is actually a weird one because we're not really sure why there is a huge driver for plant sales. I guess people just wanted their front yards to look nice, but there was a lot of sales in 2022 for nursery stock. Apiary, it was actually increased because we got a lot better beekeeper responses. Again, this is all based on what information we get from industry. So we had more surveys were turned to us than also, again, Pauline, she did a lot of calls, so she talks to a lot of stakeholders to kind of bounce some of these numbers, be like, are these really the numbers that you're seeing? And so we got a better, a better value there. And so timber, I kind of, I kind of already covered that one. And that 4% is actually, it, it, from what we can tell, it seems like that was, that, they would have left it out there, but that was more just kind of, they were kind of culling and cleaning out the, the timber that they had and that accounted for the 4%. So, all right, everybody's favorite cannabis. Cannabis did it really, really quite well last year. So this is several factors that actually led to this. So value, it was much better in 2022 than 2021. And also the prices for this one, unlike last year, because again, this is only the second one we put out. So we're still learning as well as far as what to ask for and kind of sussing out these numbers. But we also included mixed and indoor, which were left off of inadvertently in 2021. So the other part of this as well is, so Department of Cannabis Control, we're actually at a state level, so the Association of Commissioners is working on an M O U so that we can have access to their information about licensees and kind of volumes there to again, make better numbers for our crop report. Because, so again, this cannabis not legal on a federal level, so this is technically a supplement to this crop report because it's actually not allowed in the proper crop report. Yes.
That was one of my questions. Thank you. So we don't include that in the total gross commodity price because of the feds, even though we're reporting this out to C D F A.
Yeah, so again, because it's legal state on California recognizes it, feds do not. So that's why it's just a supplement because I mean, the price of cannabis, I mean, it's pretty much on par with our total run of our ag. It's impressive.
Doubles the amount of gross income. It's twice the size of the cattle industry.
Yes, it's huge. And it's probably going to get bigger because what we did find is that, just like we're getting better at doing the survey, they're getting better at growing. So they're actually figuring out how to make more product per square foot and they're increasing also the quality of the product. So I'm, I'm expecting this is just going to keep trending upwards. So it's something to keep an eye on. And then the other thing too, just to clarify for the licensing, so that's actually licenses are in use. We have the 189-ish that are in the county, but not everyone actually uses them. So they kind of hold on to them, but these numbers actually represent people who went out there and grew something. All right, so department summary, this is just kind of activities within the department. So pest exclusion and just kind of let you guys also know, as far as a lot of these different programs we have, I do intend to come back probably after you guys go dark for the holidays and kind of go through and kind of let everybody know what our department does, just because a lot of people don't know that we have so many programs and what those programs are and how, I mean, not even if you are in Ag, but if you're just like a resident who wants to identify a bug that, you know, we're a resource. And then also cover some funding because we do get a lot of funding through both federal and state contracts and grants. And we also get a subvention in mill tax too, that pays for about a third of every dollar in our department. But going back to this, so pest exclusion, so this is basically kind of what it sounds like, trying to keep the bugs out. And with this one, so what we'll do is we go to any, anyone like any lumber stores, any box stores or just straight nurseries that actually sell nursery stock that comes in from out of the county. We'll go out there and we, we look for certain bugs, mostly it's something called glasswing sharpshooter, which would decimate our grape industry. Fortunately, we don't have it, but they, it is, it is naturalized in Southern California. It's not native to California. So we went out, did 39 inspections for that. And then the other thing we do is we go to the U P S, the sorting facility we have in the county. So we go out there, as you can see, pretty much every single day, and we look for any agricultural packages that are coming through because backyard fruit is the number one way to get non-native pests into our county that we do not want. This is actually a banner year for California in a very bad way in that we have seen usually for like Oriole fruit fly, Med fly, all those fly flies, usually we see maybe one or two state quarantines a year and we'll see, you know, a handful of pest detections. And I think we're at something like 400%. It's ridiculous, the amount of bugs that they're intercepting and they're, they're, they're finding. So again, the, you know, don't pack a pest, that's, it's really crucial for us to keep looking for these proactively to make sure they don't come into our county and become established. Pest detection, so that is again, part of keeping stuff out. What that is, is looking for stuff that might have just start to be established here. And that's actually how they, they found a lot of these fruit flies across California and something called a spongy moth and Japanese beetle. So this one is, is directed by our contract with California Department of Food and Agriculture as far as kind of what they want to see out in the field. So we take that, we go out, that's how many traps that we deploy, the types of bugs that we deploy them for. So that includes like the ones I just said, like the Med fly and the Japanese beetle, the spongy moth. And then we go out and we service them, make sure that we don't have any of those bad bugs in there. Then with direct marketing, again, this is us going out to the farmers markets and just making sure that there's the proper signage up, that the, everybody selling there actually grew what they, they're purport to have grown. And part of that, the other side of it is the certified producer certificates. So that is actually when we go out and we will actually go out to the fields and actually look for, you know, those tomatoes growing, make sure that that's where they came from. Then weights and measures, it's a very important part of our, our department. And anytime anyone is out there and they see that little circular seal on there, that lets them know that when they're buying something commercially, if it's by weight, measure, it is accurate and they are getting what they paid for. So that was, those numbers were pretty level from last year. And then the other thing too, that I wanted to bring up that was in the crop report is we did have that five county, the pesticide disposal day last November. I'm really quite proud of that, that, that took a lot of effort, took about a year to put together, believe it or not, just, just to get contracts with all the hazmat companies and everything to come in, take the material. So again, I was really happy to be a part of that, have, you know, Calaveras be able to kind of jump on that bandwagon just because it's, it's an expensive event to put together and we were able to do that through a Department of Pesticide Regulation grant. And then otherwise, that's pretty much all I have unless you guys have some questions for me.
So how, how often does it happen that you go to a farmer's market and somebody's selling tomatoes and then you go out and find that they're growing pumpkins and not tomatoes and?
Yeah. So fortunately, being in a smaller county, we actually have a much better interaction with our growers and we can kind of do more of a, of a one-on-one, see what they're doing. And it's, it's really quite rare, but I will say, having come from a larger county, that it is surprising how many people, when you, you go out there and they'll have a box, a, like a banker box of potatoes or something else. And it's like, it's not in the ground, but you have this commercial box. And so it, it is, it does happen. Fortunately, not so much in this county though.
That's good.
Yeah.
Supervisor Garmody.
Thank you, Jesse. And I want to thank you for coming back in the new year and really breaking it out. I think we do almost half a million dollars of general fund to, to your department.
Yes.
It'd be good to see it. And also having a U C C E in there as well. You know, should we put a lot of money into those programs on, I think it'd be great for us all to see where it's going. One of the things that, you know, when we did, we were doing our 1795 cannabis regulation the other day, Doug Oliver, the director, had how many permits, work permits, which was pretty enlightening, over 500 jobs created through that industry. So dollar to dollar, that's quite a bit. I wonder if, as you go through collecting all this data, if there's ever the opportunity to add job data to those industries. I mean, certainly cattlemen use a lot less labor than cannabis farms or grapes. And so that would be a really interesting piece to add into the report is the economic impact to the community, not just in our gross sales. Because I think it would show really that it's not just the ranchers, it's the guys who run the feed stores, who service the vehicles, all the, I don't know how you do that, but I think it would be an interesting thing if those numbers even exist.
Yeah, and I can, I can certainly try to extrapolate that. I do know, so again, the commissioners on a statewide level have actually done, not with cannabis, because again, that federal thing, but they actually did that, an economic survey for just regions, not by county, unfortunately. But I'm wondering if maybe I can extrapolate from that a little bit and just, again, just reach out to stakeholders and kind of.
It may not even be possible, but you know, but I do look forward to the new year and hear the detail. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Any other board comments, questions? If not, I'll open it to the public. Is there any public comments, questions on this item? Seeing none? Thank you, Jesse, for a great report as usual.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And again, if you guys ever have any questions, you know where I'm at. So happy, happy to help.
And compliments, it was a really nice looking presentation.
Thank you.
That's all, that's all her. She's, she's, yeah, she's our, our really good designer.
You stick around for the hardwood one?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Move on to item number 18, informational item from planning to receive a presentation and provide policy feedback on draft Oakwood ordinance to staff in the hardwood advisory committee. Gabriel, you're the man again.
Man of the hour. Good morning, board members, CEO, county council. This item is coming before you because the hardwood advisory committee has spent an immense amount of time on this ordinance. And if the board concurs with the language of the ordinance, then you can give direction as to whether to bring it back to you with additional modifications or take it directly to the planning commission. And then it would have to come back to the board for final approval. The ordinance itself is, it's been very sensitive to the goals of the general plan. And we've tried to implement some of those measures that we think if we're going to adopt an ordinance of this nature, these would be some of the things that should be included in them. Financially, it's not costing the county any significant amount of money besides just staff salaries. And so the options before the board is to either say, we don't like this, take it back, bring us something else, or tell us that you like this and then either bring it back with your modifications or take it to the planning commission for, for approval. So those will be the next steps. And if you have any questions for me.
I believe, yes, Supervisor Fonder, if you have questions?
Uh oh. Okay. This is really good. I've seen the first and heard about the first version too, and this is a huge improvement. The questions I have primarily do, have to do with county, the county mitigation section. It's really hyper-focused on conservation easement. Was there any dialogue to explore in lieu into a separate county? Was there any dialogue to explore in lieu into a separate county fund rather than going into a state fund that specifically spelled out? Because under the Public Resource Code, there is a section that other, other mitigation measures developed specifically by the county, which would be in lieu. And then also, instead of this primary conservation easement, open space easement, which then allows for, where you can lock it in with 20, 10, 20, 30 years, or whatever those years are, versus a complete conservation easement where you can't do any development, even if the property owner changes that. So those were mostly my questions. And I'm sure you had the dialogue, but it's not in here. And I think I would like, at least personally, I would like to see that, because my concern is going forward into the county, that we continue to do these conservation easements for locking any potential growth. For example, if anyone doesn't know, Greenhorn Creek, one side of the fence line, you can never expand, because it is locked into a conservation easement. So there's no ability for the city to, there is no want to incorporate that into a city, or even if the county wanted to butt up into that service area, you can't. It's, it's no development, which would make sense, because that should be where development goes versus out in the middle of nowhere where no services are.
Absolutely. Before I answer your question, let me just mention that I have two members of the hardwood advisory committee in the audience this morning. So there they are in the back. And District Five Supervisor Stoppa is also the chair of the hardwood advisory committee. We discussed the possibility of, of, of in lieu fees, and we had some concerns, because the concerns would be the methodology of actually identifying what the fees are going to be. We could, we had very lengthy discussions about it. Are we going to use the services of a consultant who is going to identify the cost of a tree and therefore provide us what the in lieu fees would be? And we were not so sure whether or not that's going to lead to us having to do some kind of a nexus study and things of that nature. So we tried to, tried to put all that type of mitigation into just land conservation. And by us just being a pass-through agency for conservation as mitigation measures for impacts on, on, on oak woodlands, we think we avoided that particular area a little bit. Now, if the board wants us to look at in lieu fees specifically, then we would have to have conversations with, with legal counsel as to what would be the best way to do it. Now, there are some other ordinances that I've seen that have actually gone directly out there and thrown in dollar amounts. But then it kind of becomes, how did you arrive at that number? Do we have to do any kind of special studies, et cetera, et cetera? So that's, that's how, that is the story on, on those in lieu fees.
That makes sense. I just have concerns, because we're kind of in a moment of time where, with this creation, but we're not putting any investments back into our own, our own county-
Oh, yeah.
-to keep the health of the current woodlands we have.
Right.
We have massive overgrowth, you know, buildup fuel, and we're having to depend on other outside agencies and dollars, and if we even are lucky to get grants, to clean up those. And so I just want to make sure we don't pass ourselves, when we have this in front of us now-
Yeah.
...reinvest back into the current woodland system we have in our county and have that control.
Yeah.
And I, not to, to baggage on top of the ag department, but we have other, other partners, such as the RCD that we created years ago and things like that. And so how, when no, we, I guess, re-investing into them-
Yeah.
-to continue to do that, so they're not depending on those grants. So I just, I get the nexus, and I see that, I understand the complexity of that and what further the delay this could cause to the current ordinance in front of us, but I also don't want to pass our opportunity to reinvest in ourselves, so we're not reliant on other funds.
Okay, thank you.
If I can add to that-
Yes.
-if you don't mind, sir. We, we, we spent a lion's share of months and months of meetings talking about exactly that. And, you know, RCD did come up, because where, where's, where, what's the vessel that carries that money and provides the work? Which RCD would be a very good spot for that to lie in. But at the same time, the investment of those dollars in lieu, we were also careful, we wanted to be careful and not do it in lieu fees that could go out to the state woodlands, because more often than not, those monies get spent elsewhere in other counties. And that, you know, it's very complicated, and there's a lot of different facets to it. It's a good, it's a good thought process, and we all wanted to make that happen, but when it comes down to it, you know, possible exposure with putting down a price on that, and not having a nexus study behind it, and having someone be able to come forward later on and say, hey, you charged me unjustified amount. And so, there, there, yes, absolutely. It was a big concern of the hardwood advisory committee. It was deep in discussion. We wanted to make something happen, and we just, it complicated this document to the point where we were going back to what the original document was starting to look like. And, and so we, I mean, I have to commend them, because it's been like a tide, tidal wave, or the tides of the ocean, you know? First, we started out very complicated, then we reeled it back, and then we cut, then we started talking about all these issues, and then it got very complicated again. And they're like, wait a minute, maybe simpler is easier, and starting out there. And this is another document, we can decide if we want to keep it living, because I think it probably should be.
What about, what about open space easement versus conservation?
I'm, I'm sorry.
What about open space easement versus conservation being the only option?
We, we, we discussed that. I would love to have some of my fellow commissioners come up and talk to the-
What is, what is the difference? What is an open space easement? I'm familiar with that term.
Open, open space easement is where you can dictate the terms of where that land cannot be developed, whether it be 10, 15, 20, 30 years, whereas a conservation easement is locked for life, literally locked for the rest of time, because you can't ever undo the conservation. So basically, you make a decision on your property, you die, it exchanges hands, there's no room for changing that.
I, I'm familiar with it, I have one on a ranch. So, yes. I didn't know, open space is more like a Williams Act?
Yes, somewhat, yeah.
Or farm on security zone.
Yes. I wouldn't explain it for you, I would explain it for the public.
Gotcha.
Mr. Onetto. Yeah, good afternoon, good morning again. Scott Onetto, UC Cooperative Extension Farm Advisor. So, yeah, so we've talked about those discussions in depth, and I think, I, I think the nexus study probably was the, the ultimate decision why we left sort of the county out of that part of the mitigation option, just because it really complicated things in terms of, one, it would be expensive to get one done, the other is then you have this whole another layer of, of, you'd have to add to the government of how those funds would then be spent. So we, we thought, in terms of powerability, it might be easier to keep it, the options simpler at first, and put the onus of how, how that would, in terms of how the transaction would take place, leave it outside of the county and let them deal directly with the conservation organization, whether it be a land trust or somebody like the RCD that can own, that can own or operate an easement. In terms of some of those shorter-term easements, we didn't really talk too much in detail about it, because being a board member of a land trust, I've been a board member for the Motherland Trust for roughly 25 years now, the idea of these shorter-term easements is fairly new to California. It happens in other states across the US, but there hasn't been a whole lot of actual on practice of conservation easements with shorter terms that aren't in perpetuity. I think that's certainly something we could explore, we just need to make sure that it's legal from the standpoint of any tax implications of how that transaction takes place. And then in far as the open space discussion, I guess the open space designations could be something that could be added. We just need to look at how that, how that actually plays out in terms of, does that open space designation stay with who? Who owns it? You know, does it go to, because usually if it's, you know, we're talking about developed land, once that development takes place, you know, things get parcellized out, they get built, whatever it is, they then get sold, and then you have this area, this nebulous of space that, you know, maybe gets an open space designation. Who then, you know, has, who owns that, who maintains it, and how does that all happen? And so those are some of the concerns that we kind of talked about with the open space one. You know, maybe turn over to Tim, see if he has any additional comment.
Sure. My name's Tim Tatum, I'm a registered professional forester, component of the hardwood advisory committee. One thing I just wanted to address, Supervisor Follendorf's question, if I heard you right, you may have been concerned about this ordinance impacting fuel reduction projects that may flow through the RCD.
No, it's more just improving the current health of our current oaklands, and just making sure that we had available funds without depending on external monies to keep the existing woodlands thriving, especially with the amount of drought, you know, because there's a lot of overclearing, overgrowth of fuel.
Well, one thing about this ordinance, it does not affect any, or another way to look at it, activities that are exempt from this ordinance would be like fuel reduction projects through the CCI grants that may happen to improve the health of the woodlands, maybe thinning or something like that. It does not affect forest management activities, and it does not affect what I would call routine maintenance on a farm or ranch like-
No, I understand, I understand how to refund that, so the private property owners can keep up and maintain the current woodland. I, I get that, but without having to depend on like how far to do those specific product, project. So I'm just worried that we, we depend so much on the external money factors, we're not investing in ourselves to do exactly those items.
I agree, but this, this doesn't generate revenue, so I'm sure it's helpful in that regard.
If I may chime in, the goal of this ordinance is to mitigate the removal, destruction of oak woodlands as part of a subdivision, a large subdivision. So it only applies in that scenario. So if a developer comes into the county and they're trying to build, and let's say there are oak woodlands on the property, they would have to mitigate for that. It doesn't affect what happens on privately-owned properties. And I, I know you understand-
Yeah, but then you just, so the develop, so that would be where the money comes from, is-
Right.
-fund ourselves, is from the development fee, is what I'm saying. So there is money there, because the developers still have to pay for those mitigations.
Well, they can either-
We just had to do that with-
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
So that's where the funding would come from, and that's where it's asking if there was an, I get development in this county is few and far between, but why aren't we taking that money? Why are we allowing them to deposit it into the state fund or other fund? That's where my question is coming, but Ben answered it, so that's-
Yeah, no, and I think, I think it's a little, little multi-level there, Ms. Follendorf.
I mean, if that's something, that's something we can explore. My concern about just having an open space easement is that we want the mitigation to be in perpetuity. You know, because if you take on an oak tree, you're taking something that, you know, is perhaps not replaceable. By the time the oak gets to be the size of the oak you took away, it's probably going to take, you know, 20, 30 years. So, and, and, so that, that's why we're looking at conservation. With conservation, we know it's going to always be protected, or else we're just, we're just having a repeat of, you know, we build, we grow oak trees, somebody comes and destroys them, and then we grow oak trees again, and somebody comes to destroy them. And, and we're trying to avoid that. I mean, the, the goal is really is to prevent the removal of oak trees, but we know that's not, that's not reasonable, it's not sustainable. And because if we want development, we're going to have to, we're going to have to do something. So what this ordinance does is to provide avenues for the removal of oak trees and adequate mitigation. If you think, and this is the board collectively, that there's enough, there's not enough mitigation in this ordinance, please give us some direction, and we'll, we'll go and, and, and we'll beef it up a little bit. And we just have to get, you know, legal counsel to, to make sure that whatever direction we're going is, is not going to be, is going to be consistent with, you know, with the goals of the general plan and, and, and just law in general.
If I could just clarify one thing, Chair Toffinelli, and I apologize, I may have misunderstood Director Elliott, but I, I just want to make it clear, this doesn't only apply to like large development, it applies to any non-exempt discretionary approval.
Exactly.
Yes.
Supervisor Germini?
Thank you very much, and, and to the advisory board and Supervisor Stoppa, thank you for all your work on this. I mean, this has come a long way from the first version I saw. So I was, I was happy to read this. It, it does apply to all discretionary, as you pointed out. I think Supervisor Follendorf's point, anything we do as far, I, I'm good with this ordinance as it stands. I think it's, I think an easement should be permanent. We have other vehicles available for shorter-term easements, Farm on Security Act, Williams Act, other tools. This is about mitigation, those trees are gone, they're gone. But I do want to make sure that any mitigation funds that come out, assuming someday we do have some development and there's fees generated, they are spent in Calaveras. And you did that when you talked about offsetting trees, mitigation from Calaveras, and there's, and I like the fact that we're letting the semi-private sector figure that out. The developer's going to come, and they're going to go shop at the Motherload Land Trust or the Cattlemen's, I guess, Rangeland Trust, whomever, and they're going to go out and shop and let the market find the fit. So we don't have to be involved. There's a market that exists, we can, we can stay out of. But if they do do in lieu, we do have to figure out a way to, that money to Supervisor Follendorf's point, is spent in the county. So that was the only part. So if we can work out that piece, even if we just say, you know what, we're not going to do in lieu, you're going to have to sequester your cart, or save your cheese in Calaveras, that's fine. It just would break my heart to see this money go to the Wildlife Conservation Board and spent in any of the other 57 other counties. So-
It's a norm.
Good job.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other comments? Before I open it to public comment, is there any?
Just wanted to ask, what happens to those that don't comply with the ordinance?
Tim Tatum?
Because I didn't see anything in the ordinance, I mean, as far as, well, trees disappearing in the middle of the night kind of thing.
Well, the preamble to the ordinance, at least one of the versions, would prohibit anybody from actually destroying oak woodlands on the property prior to applying for a subdivision application. So if we, through technology, we can tell, you know, we, we look at, you know, Google Earth, and here's a lush oak woodland six months ago, and then today you show up with an application and said, I, I want to build 200 homes, and, and the land is barren. Well, we're going to have to ask some questions. And at that particular point, you're going to have to make sure that we're actually walking within our legal limits. To what extent do we exercise authority to say, you cut the trees down, you have to mitigate for them? So, but there is language in the ordinance for that.
Maybe, just to that point, under section 17.101.040 on page, I guess that'd be roughly five, there is a section that says, it's under approval required prior to removal. Violation of this clause will result in assessment of fines to the developer through the project's conditions of approval and mitigation measures. So there is a statement in reference to that. And then I guess maybe to your comment, Supervisor Germini, we do have under that section on oak woodland mitigation, that the mitigation of oak woodlands shall take place within Calaveras County. If that's not strong enough, I mean, the one concern that we all had is that option C, which is the contribution of funds to the state's oak woodland mitigation bank. Yeah, and I don't, we tried to get clarification as, because we have seen some other counties' ordinances where they actually have a, a sentence in that same statement- ordinances where they actually have a sentence in that same statement where it says those funds are to be spent in that county, but we haven't been able to get clarification from the state that those, that that actually can happen, so.
Well, so I think my understanding, and Ms. Maslowis can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that our general plan requires that to be an option, obviously amongst others. And so, I mean, Mr. Onetto brings up a good point, we could certainly, we could put in language saying these must be spent in Calaveras, but I think, yeah, I agree that we don't necessarily know the answer to whether that will fly.
Probably because the state's taking the money.
Yeah, we have seen counties that same exact, the verbiage exactly the same.
Put it in and see the expenses.
I have a question on the mitigation efforts. If I'm, if I'm clearing a piece of property for development and I have to take out 12 trees, my mitigation for an easement, does it have to have 12 trees or more in it? So equal for equal? Is that?
No, there's.
Or more?
More.
Yeah.
More.
Or, or more, that's my question. If it has a minimum, that you're taking out or more.
Yeah, more, definitely more, depending on the age, depending on the age and the type of the tree that's being removed. So, and we have a table in there that shows.
Yeah, I thought, I just wanted to make sure it clarified, I was reading it correctly.
Yeah, it could be one for one, two and a half to one, and so on and so forth.
Okay.
Well, well, actually, what you're probably talking about would be the removal of what we've defined as a heritage tree, and, and what we did, you, if you're going to cut down 150-year-old 36-inch oak, you can't immediately replace that, obviously. So what, what we've done is take, take that and instead of requiring replacement with a tree, we've converted that to acreage based upon the diameter of the heritage tree, and you'll see that in, in the ordinance. So we want to keep everything apples and apples.
Yeah, versus planting trees, which you're cutting down a tree that's a heritage tree, that could have been there 60 years, and then you try and plant a separate tree that may, may not make it. You've got to make sure that you plant enough in the mitigation that's going to cover over a number of years, and that goes back to her question about a time limit on it, and you can't, in my opinion, I'm with Jack, you can't put a time limit on that, of what you're taking out, they're gone.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so if you try and mitigate it, you've got to put it in a situation where they're going to stay.
Several, several other counties had provisions in their ordinances where you would, you would mitigate by planting new oak seedlings, and that's something that, I wouldn't say quickly, but eventually we got to the point where we didn't see, we didn't see the value in that, so we took, took that out as a mitigation option altogether.
It was originally in here, but that's right.
Yes.
It was originally in. Okay, thank you. There was an example in Amherst County, I think, that Mr. Onetto had brought up, where it's just, you know, seedlings, and they weren't necessarily taken care of.
Correct, yeah, I think we've seen more failures of seedling mitigation plantings go as failures than success stories. There are certainly ones out there that have been success stories, but I think for the most part, they, unless you have some type of, then it gets into a lot more detail of who's going to be the responsible party for following up for five, 10, 15, 20 years to making sure that those trees actually come to mature oak woodlands.
We originally had that in there, it was the minimum of five years, I think it was.
Correct.
That you had to maintain those trees, make sure they survive.
Yeah, and even after five years, you're still not guaranteed that that's.
Guaranteed, that's correct.
Yeah, so basically it's set up, it's basically you're replacing like for like, and depending on the quality of that stand, and again, we have a matrix in there of how to determine the quality of that oak woodland, that's bases what the mitigation ratio is on.
I need more BLM pieces that are intended after 30 years, higher risks. It's great work.
Okay, any other public comment? Al, you have any comment on this? You're sitting there with a look, so I, and then Julie's getting up again.
I also got around to taxpayer association. I don't, I don't know. If this is really relevant, it seems that the trees have low rates in the pipeline. It seemed the marketplace was valid for heritage trees, especially when they're planned within a subdivision, because it really is valid to the subdivision. Perhaps it would be better, you know, taking advantage of the opportunity of a planning ordinance, if I wanted it.
Thank you, Al. Any other public comments? Seeing none, closed public comments, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there any final comments from the board members? Just want to thank everyone that we worked with on this to this point, you know, there's a lot of really intelligent, enthusiastic people on that, that committee, and, you know, they put in a lot of good work to get to this point, so just want to thank them, and I'm really happy with what we have to this point, and that's that.
Mr. Chairman, Chair.
Thank you. Thank everybody that got involved in this, and thank Ben for being a part of our board member on this committee. With that, that was an informational item, so we will go forward.
Yeah, so, part of a, part of a recommendation, and one of the alternatives is for the board to decide whether or not you find this ordinance as is acceptable to move forward, and if so, we'll take it to the planning commission. If you have recommendations and recommended changes, do you want us to bring that back before you, before we take it back to the planning commission? So we have to, we have to, want to address that as well.
May I make a recommendation? Well, you can, but I want to ask, this is informational item, if we go down this road, make a motion and give directions?
No, no motion, yeah, just, I think it's just giving direction to staff of what to then bring forward.
Yeah. All right, sure. I would like to let this go through to the planning commission as is, and at that point, if anybody wants to make changes at the planning commission level, we'll see when it gets to the board.
And they don't have much to do anyway, but, so let's add some more.
Don't worry, I'll teach you that.
I, I agree, Supervisor Stopper, I always feel better when Tim takes a look at things before they come before me, so, yes.
All right, Supervisor Hubbard, do you agree with that?
Yep.
Follendorf? All right, yes. Send it to the planning commission. All right, with that, we will move on to the next item, which is staff announcements. In compliance with government code 53232.3D, board members should provide brief reports in any meeting attended at the expense of a local agency and may make other announcements or report out, which start with Supervisor London Hubbard.
Oh, sorry, Supervisor Hubbard, your mic. Thank you. On the second, I attended the Agency on Aging meeting, again, pushing forward our idea of burn buddies, which is great, they were incredibly helpful, and tonight at the town hall in San Andreas, it's the PG&E Town Hall, which I think is really important for a lot of the constituents in my area who've been calling regarding PG&E issues. Just want to remind everybody to show up, and Dia de los Muertos was fantastic last weekend, so thank you.
Supervisor Guerra Mendy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A required report, I attended the revenue workshop with you on November 1st and 2nd, and thank you very much, everybody helped that together.
Supervisor Follendorf? You have nothing to report? Supervisor Stopper? CSAC will be next week, we'll be attending that. Also, I'll be running into Mr. Guerra Mendy's district for Chicken in the Barrel this Saturday, hopefully I'll see you there, and turkey in the barrel.
Turkey.
Turkey in the barrel, I said chicken. Hey, we're losing chickens right now according to crop report, so. Turkey, turkey in the barrel. And just as Martin said, the PG&E things tonight, and we just had our power outage, you know, down, down there, I don't, you know, I can't blame PG&E because people just can't seem to miss or power poles down, down in our area, which was the root cause of our power loss in a large area this morning. But they are raising our rates significantly, consistently, and, you know, there's a lot of, lot going on with that, and everything's getting more expensive, so that's that. I attended with Supervisor Guerra Mendy for two days a revenue workshop. It was well done, a lot of information came out of that. What we're going to do with it, I don't know, because all I heard a lot about was grants, and grants are not sustainable, so we'll see what happens and what comes out of it, and expect a report coming back sometime within, I believe, by January sometime, I'm going to put all that information together. I attended the Mountain Counties EMS Agency meeting on Monday, and I have a behavioral health meeting, board meeting today at four o'clock, so that's all I have to report. CEO, Hitchcock?
So, I too was at the revenue workshop, and I'd like to thank all of our county department heads and their fiscal teams for the work that they put into that. They did a tremendous job of really outlining what those revenue opportunities are for each department, and we will be looking at how we can capitalize on some of that information as well and in the future. So thank you for participating.
Yes, thanks all the department heads for being there. County council, you have anything? You have a look on your face like you want to say something.
No, just a reminder that we will be going back in a closed session and then we'll report out at our next meeting.
Okay. Clerk?
Nothing to report out.
Well, with that, then, we will adjourn and we will go into closed session at 12:30. Report out, as county council said, our next meeting, which is the 28th, am I correct? 28.